So, and it's fine, everyone can continue to eat while we're, while we're, while we're working. So, I have some of the, pass the microphone back over to Mr. Murphy and Ms. Jerome Robinson. Or one, or just one of you, doesn't have to be both of you, but I just, I know, I think you guys had some comments, and I'd love to hear from staff if they have any comments about, about the CIP.
Great, so I thought I would just take a quick opportunity to, primarily for the council's benefit, to identify a couple of the things that were discussed, so that you can, it can just hopefully frame it for your, your discussion. So, just using an example, there are a couple of things raised about potential improvements for sidewalks on Laurel and Sinal, even the intersection of Newbridge and Willow. Each of those are identified specifically in our transportation master plan as a potential specific improvement, so that is indeed the best venue for taking the specific items, and then through that process, when that eventually gets adopted, that will be the tool to eventually fund the capital improvement projects. We'll be looking to that list as opposed to any sort of ad hoc process. So, good that a number of those are already in the plan. With the Bedwell Bayfront Park Master Plan, it would be important to differentiate between an operating expense versus a capital expense. So, the idea of the Ranger, which is called out in the master plan, would be part of the operating budget and not part of the capital budget. There is a number of capital improvements that are identified, but the topic of the Ranger would be more for the operating budget. There was comment about street resurfacing, and resurfacing specifically on Santa Cruz and Middle. So, there is, that, Santa Cruz and Middle projects are grant funded, and we're going to be bringing something to the council shortly, force some direction in terms of how to go about the eventual striping that would occur after the resurfacing, so you'll see that shortly. A couple last things, there's talk about Dunbarton Rail, again, it's another entity that's in the lead, so that has been funded historically in the capital budget, but that's actually something that would probably make more sense being in the operating budget, because it's mainly any staff time or consultant assistance, but it is, that one being tier three, it's a very important transportation project, but that, it's, it's a much different effort when we're providing support or assistance versus us being in the project manager lead. So, that's more of a reflection of what the staff needs are, as opposed to the importance of the project. And then just lastly, with the parking plazas, like seven and eight, those are identified in the five-year plan. Those are not currently funded, so as the council goes through either the goal-setting, priority-setting, and/or the CIP budget process, identifying where that ranks would ultimately be important. And then the topic of undergrounding utilities, some of that goes hand-in-hand with those two downtown parking plazas, because there are overhead lines there, and the thought for the number of years had been to place those underground, but that can be revisited through this council process. So, that's just a quick overview of a few comments that were made, and I specifically framed those just to hopefully assist the council in working through their next deliberations.
I know there's a lot of pre-work done by staff, so there may be no recommendations, but if there is, love to hear them now. Are there any recommendations in terms of changing the tiering, or pulling something off the list that you just want to share with council? Nope? Okay, great. And then, I want to turn now to council, and remember, we're discussing here, tiering and whether to take something off the list. We'll have a discussion about adding things to it later on. Does anyone have any questions, I mean, any discussion, questions related to that, or any suggestions in terms of taking something off the list?
Okay, there's, there's one last thing I want to touch on, and our city attorney, just because I, now that we are going to do it, some of these council members are going to have conflicts on. There are so many things that touch different parts of the city, and that is to be expected. If it happens, that a discussion starts to come up with something you have a comment on, you can just go ahead and get up and walk to the back of the room, because it's going to move very quickly, and then we'll come back, and we'll wait for you to come back. So, we'll do the best we can, we'll try to, try to keep track of that. Let's go ahead, I believe, Councilmember Nash, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Taylor.
I have a question about the tiering. With the Bellhaven Youth Center improvement, it's tier one because of the state that it's in, or is it tier one because of the funding? What makes it a tier one? I'm not sure if that's a, Justin, or?
There's multiple components to that. One is the, it is a project that has grant funding, and so that, that helps it raise to the top, it's also, and that, that grant funding was to give the building, excuse me, I just took a bite, to have a refresh, similar to what was done with the Bellhaven Child Development Center. But in terms of starting to work through the details on that, we think that there may be some other possibilities to be explored, since it's a, pretty much, we've learned that it's a 1947 building that was relocated in the, on the same site in the early 70s, and instead of putting more money into that existing building, there may be some other options that would be worth exploring. So, it's kind of front and center in our minds, and so that's why it's a high priority.
Okay. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, just, and I apologize if this is an elementary question, but explain to me what would be the impact of moving something off the list that currently has a priority of NA?
I think it would depend, we should probably go through some of the examples. Some of them may be, yeah, is there, is there an example that you have in mind, because that may be easiest for me to respond to, but?
So, then, let's say the, the, the parking plazas, or even the Willow Oaks Park Bicycle Connector, like if, I'm just getting some sense of if, if they're already in a?
So, the parking plazas, as, as Fran said earlier, plazas seven and eight need to be redone, it's just a matter of when it happens. And as she said, and I kind of nodded while she was saying it, those two plazas cannot be slurry sealed, they need to be reconstructed. So, it said he has eight plazas, four of those have been reconstructed in the past 20-some-odd years, there's four remaining that need to be redone. Two of those, plazas one and three, are potential candidates for some sort of structured parking. Seven and eight are not potential candidates. Seven and eight should be designed together, they should probably be constructed in phases so that we don't disrupt, displace too much parking, but those definitely need to be done, it's just a matter of when they get done. So, I would not take the plaza seven, eight off this five-year CIP whatsoever, it's just a matter whether it gets, starts to get funded for the design in 1920, or whether the design gets delayed till 2021.
Do you mind if I ask a follow-up question?
Somebody mentioned before, why don't we just underground all of the electricity? And I had the same question a couple of years ago. There's a weird way it's constructed, that part of what we pay in the money for the electricity to be delivered, little bit by little bit, gets saved up, and then we get to use that for undergrounding the electricity cables. And so, we've got, like, just enough to do the undergrounding downtown, because I was saying, why don't we underground all the cables down Santa Cruz when we're doing the sidewalk, which would have been a no-brainer, but it comes down to the, to the financing agreement and the way that was structured, which is another longer conversation. But my question, why I bring it up now, is when we're ripping up the sidewalks and re, sorry, the parking lot downtown, is that one of the areas targeted? Once it's up, then we can put in conduit and underground the wires, and can some of the money that's already, but put towards undergrounding the wires be used to the sand? Is that part of the consideration in the financing?
Yes, that's definitely part of the consideration, so then it's whether we look at the entire downtown with the other parking plazas as well, or to focus in specifically on, say, plazas seven and eight, and then the utility connections that would be needed for those individual businesses. But it's definitely, we need to make that conscious decision about the undergrounding before we proceed with the design. And so, to, to date, the operating understanding is, is that there, those utilities would be undergrounded as part of redoing those parking plazas, but we need to actually confirm that going forward, because that, by including that as part of the project, that will make the project a little bit more complicated, and will take a little bit more time, but it may pay dividends in the long run.
Well, potentially, we have that money set aside that would pay for part of it?
Correct.
That we have right now in budget, and with time value of money, every year we wait, effectively, we have less money.
May I answer your question with regard to the NA? So, in terms of the budget process, the capital improvement plan is part of the budget document, and it's, the list is meant to capture all projects that you want to go through this process every year and consider. If there's anything on the list that, whether it's NA or not, that you no longer wish to consider and think needs to fall off the list for whatever reason, then it would just fall off the list and not be part of this process anymore, whereas the NA just means it's, it's a project you're interested in, though it has no funding assigned at this time.
Yeah, and I just wanted to sort of add that, that sort of was the distinction I was trying to get to, and not specifically that I'm, don't see the value in redoing the parking plazas, but one of the public comments, you know, highlighted this point of there are things that just sort of stay on this list, and, and to get a sense of, is this something that's there to put on a list because we feel good, that it's part of a process, and we're, we're responding to a certain political will that's not great enough to get it beyond NA? And just some understanding of like, is it, is like, getting something from NA to a tier, is it a, an actual sort of issue of funding, or is it an issue of, as, as I think Mayor Mueller brought up, sort of a political will that can spring up? And so, and that's just, and I'm not asking you to, to obviously, to respond, but that's sort of what I was trying, trying to get at.
So, there may be things, especially for the three, my three new colleagues, there may be things that you want to get done in your tenure on this council, and you, in discussing it with staff, or even in your assessment of the landscape in the city, you don't necessarily want to have that conversation yet, staff doesn't have capacity for it, or it hasn't, but you still may want to go ahead and put this as a, as a marker in the future that you want that discussion to come up and have. And we certainly, I can think of, when I first got here, some of the council members were interested in electronic permitting and things like that, and so there was a discussion, let's put a, there's enough will on council that we're going to put something in here to talk about that, but we don't have capacity this year, or there's not funding this set aside this year, but it's a way to, for it to be there so you don't lose it, and lose track of it in your future discussions. Perfectly appropriate, as we go through this, to say, you know what, I'm ready to let that go. But, so, and I think too, what, what might, what's going to be beneficial for us today in terms of time, is that if there is, if someone identifies something that they want to have come off the list, if there isn't just like an automatic, universal agreement with, both with staff and council, that that should just happen, what we should probably do is just identify it, and then have that, bring that to council for discussion at a, at a policy, at a policy level with a, with a staff briefing on it, rather than try to fight that out today. So, are, that being said, any other comments or items to identify to be taken off the list, or questions around tiering? Councilmember Nash?
So, first of all, I guess I would love to hear, or to have a discussion of undergrounding citywide, before we decide to go ahead in any one area. I think that would be something that would be worthwhile for the whole, across the whole city. When I'm looking at the city buildings and systems, I question the gatehouse fence replacement, and that it's a tier three, and when I read the information on it, it sounded like it was, you know, important, but doesn't really rise to the level of any of the other items that we're discussing. So, I would propose that that possibly be taken off the list, unless you can give me more insight.
So, I'll just tell you, I want it done. So, why don't we go ahead and bring that as something to discuss at council? I just think it's disgusting looking right now, it's an easy fix, so. And it's a, you see it when you drive into the, it's like something you see as you go down Ravenswood, and you see when you come onto campus, and boy, it's just nasty looking, so, but we won't debate it now.
And I guess that's one of the, as was said by, I think, Ms. Bramlett, that time and money, yeah, if that's an easy one. Yeah. I would like to see the library system?
Easy one to execute on, or easy one to take off the list?
Easy one, if it's easy to execute, that's great. Along the same line of priorities, and that we can't do everything, I would like to see the library system improvement, main library, move to an NA. And I can give more information, but that's.
I have a clarifying question?
Yes.
Are you talking about a new library, or are you talking about the upgrades planned for the current library?
I'm talking about any effort that goes toward the main library that distracts from the Bellhaven library.
Okay. I, in theory, I agree, because we've agreed before about the new library, I would have to have more information on specifically, there could be like easy fixes on things that are real issues that need to be dealt with, and I don't want to stop that if they're easy fixes, because libraries are important.
I actually, I completely agree libraries are important, and that, anyway.
I don't think they're always mutually exclusive.
Having said that, I think that there's probably some easy fixes, when I was at the library meeting on Monday, and I was talking to some of the library members, one of the issues at Burgess is that there's not, we have a waiting list for the children's hour. That seems like something that doesn't need to be necessarily on this list, and perhaps we can just, we, anyway, there may be some areas which are easily identifiable where we can move them to the Ariaga Center, where we have, anyway, we can resolve them very quickly, I don't want to ignore those. I'm just talking about an effort that will take away from our focus of getting the Bellhaven library done, and also getting streets repaired, infrastructure and things like that. So, it's just, it's all just a relative priority.
All right.
Another?
Go ahead, sorry.
On the streets and sidewalks, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see anything there for Bellhaven, and there's been a number of people who've written in and talked about the disrepair of the sidewalks and some of the infrastructure there, and I'd love to at least have that on the list, and possibly have that as one of the higher tiers.
And then I think there was, let me try and find it.
Through the mayor, do you want me to, or wait?
On the Stormwater, the Chrysler Pump Station improvements, I was surprised that was a tier two, and not a tier one, from what I've know of it, but that could be my And then I just want to reiterate that we need to be, as other people have said, that on the Middle Avenue, we need to be really cognizant of all the other interactions, and what's happening there, before we, well, as part of the project. Thank you.
All right, so, the tiering, so, let's go ahead, I know the main library is going to be a discussion point that the public will want to have weigh in on, so let's go ahead and move that to a council item. The gatehouse fence, we can put as a, as a council, as a council item, but I think we could probably resolve that the night, that, that would just be attached to the goal, goal-setting approval, and we can probably just get a report out in that, because it's not that, I'm not sure we're going to have that many people come to comment on that. The Bellhaven and Chrysler Pump, is that something that, the Bellhaven, I think, is probably a larger discussion? Do you want to comment on that?
I could just, at least provide some clarity, because sometimes there's a little bit of blurring between streets and sidewalks and transportation, bless you. But on the next page, traffic and transportation, about midway through, you'll see Pierce Road sidewalk, and then there's another part of it, but that's a grant project that would, along Pierce Road, there's curb and gutter, but there's no sidewalk, so that's the, for sure, the, the major sidewalk project in, in Bellhaven. The, as we talked previously, there's Chilco on the other side, for the most of the rest of the neighborhood, it's, there are established sidewalks, so in terms of the condition of the sidewalk, if there's damage caused by trees, we have an assessment district, if there's damage that's not caused by trees, then that's the property owner's responsibility. So, then that would be kind of another policy question, if you want to go, go there.
So, can I make a suggestion, then, because I think I know where you're going with it, and I think I know how to resolve this, so I'm not, it doesn't sound like anything's coming off the list in Bellhaven, it's a question of adequacy. And so, what I suggest we do then, is that we not take anything, I don't think it's a discussion right now about taking something off the list, I think instead, what we're talking about is when we have our meeting in, in Bellhaven, that we actually do a study session on this issue. I think it would probably make sense, given the amount of information that we've received from both council members, the vice mayor and residents, that we just really drill down on this issue in Bellhaven, have a great study session around it, so.
And this is from the traffic and transportation, around the transportation master plan. Justin, you stated that the corner of Willow and Newbridge would be addressed in the transportation master plan, but just to reiterate what, I don't know if Terry's here, but it's a public safety issue, and so, if it could be addressed prior, because we have no idea when the transportation master plan is going to be completed, but it's been an issue for probably about two decades now. That's one comment. The second is, is there any way to combine the Willow Road transportation study along with the transportation master plan? It seems like there's the same topic, but yet it's separate, so I don't know if you can include that in there as well. Thank you. One other comment, I'm sorry, can we make a tier one, the traffic signal modifications? I think that, and there's another one under Bayfront Expressway, Willow Road, and Marsh Road as well. If there's some way to combine the two, instead of having those two separate projects as one, and then making them a tier one. One of them is a tier three, and the other one is a tier two.
So, what's, why don't we find, what's, why, why are those tier two and tier three right now, in terms of designation?
Let's see, so we're going backwards, in terms of the traffic signal modifications in the Bayfront Expressway, Willow Road, let me start with the Bayfront Expressway, Willow Road. So, that was a, it's a project that's underway, for the most part, the city has done as much as we can, we're now at the mercy of Caltrans, because the majority of this is within Caltrans right-of-way, so, and that's why, it, so it's a distinct project because of grant, and that's why it's a tier two versus tier one, because we've done what we can, and now we just need to kind of help to move that along. In terms of traffic signal modifications, yes, if there's any desire to kind of move within transportation, wanting to change tiers, that would be a discussion that we'd have to have back with the council about how we're staffed, and how we can deliver on some of these projects.
Councilmember Carlton?
For the sake of clarity, can you explain to everyone what that means, traffic signal? Are you talking about the timing so that the traffic moves most, more smoothly throughout the city?
Okay, so with traffic signal modifications, have more to do with the controllers that happen at, at traffic signals, but also to allow, where, like, you could have a, a green arrow to allow a write-on-red, more specifically, it could be in traffic signals, like at the intersection of University and Valparaiso, or Oak Grove and Middlefield, that have kind of five, five heads that allow someone to turn left without a, a green arrow?
Without getting into specifics, the end reason why we would make those modifications is to?
There's a combination of things, part of it is to allow traffic flow, we need to also consider safety, there's a, a number of components.
Safety and traffic flow?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
For the most part.
Okay, because those are, those are two important things that we're trying to solve in the city.
Would it make sense, can the tiering on that, on that item, a decision on that, what is, is it going to affect staff capacity to wait to have that discussion in our meeting with the fire district? Because my guess is that there is a, there's a nexus there, that they might want to weigh in on that. Does it, does it make sense to do it with that, or, or can the tiering on that, well, I'm trying to figure, I know we do this exercise, so we can measure staff capacity through the year, and I don't know if we can wait on that, or whether you need something from us earlier.
We are meeting with the fire district within the next few weeks, as a planning meeting for future joint meetings, so I think that it would be good to roll that into our discussion.
All right.
And then, in the meantime, we can address the staff capacity issue and the interconnectedness. If we make an improvement in this area, then how does that impact the next intersection on down?
So, let's go ahead and add it to the list, then, council priorities, and for council priorities, a report, like a, a weighting on that, so the night of council goals, the council goal-setting, with the final, we can say tier one, or tier two, or tier three on that, what the difference is, and how it affects staff. Because I'm, my memory of that meeting is, that's the meeting where we say, if you do this, then this. So, Councilmember Nash?
Just, the traffic light timing and all might be something that should go through complete streets.
Any other questions about, or discussion about, or want to talk about something coming off the list? Great, excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. I think we're turning it over to Mr. Pogueros now.
Okay, so now we reach sort of the end of the 2018 adopted city council work plan. This was attachment D, I believe, to the information item that was provided for the 29th. On this list, these are projects that have been placed on hold, Dan, could you take off the NA, because that's not the right place for this? The, these are projects that were placed on hold due to staffing questions, or staffing levels.
These are projects that were placed on hold due to staffing questions, or staffing levels, as well as the need for potential greater clarification and prioritization from the city council. So each of these, you see the department manager, the department responsible for those, for the project. If you'd like greater explanation of what the original scope is or where the project is, at this point, we can have the director of that department answer those questions. What we're looking for here is for the council to tell us which of these should move to the 2019 prioritization process. So if all of them do, then, then all of them will move over. But if there's some that can fall off, that might make prioritization a little simpler.
So I'll make sure, so that seems like we're jumping a step. So, and to be fair, you're asking which of these would be in the top five? Or if we want to drop any of these?
Yeah. So these would be included on the work plan to be prioritized for the top whatever when we get to that phase.
All right. So the first question we have is if anything should, so before we do that, and we're going to do that later on, we're just going to look at these now and take comment on them. And then we're going to talk about if anything, if there's any questions about them or if they should be dropped, if any should be dropped. If that works, it's great. So, Mr. Fares.
I have a clarifying question.
Oh, we, I take public comment first, then we'll do clarifying.
So Greg Fares, resident of Menlo Park since 1988, speaking in favor of the triangle annexation. So on your handout, on the bottom of the first page, shows the outline of Menlo Park City. There's an arrow in West Menlo Park, and the next page top has got a zoom in of that section. And you'll notice that there's a gap in Menlo Park that goes all the way across. There's a little strip that connects it through the Stanford Golf Course. So this is what we have now. But in this region, you've got two major roads, Santa Cruz Avenue, the Alameda, that split. Where they split, that's the triangle. Those roads in the split are, they're controlled by the county. So in terms of the traffic that's going through the major arteries in West Menlo Park, that traffics under jurisdiction of the county. On the bottom of that, that shows the proposed annexation area. So this map was developed by LAFCO, which is the organization that's responsible for promoting annexation of unincorporated regions into cities. It's bounded by the Alameda, Santa Cruz Avenue, and Sharon. Notably, Sharon on your left side, that's part of our walk-to-school routes. So students on this side have to walk along that road, which is not well-maintained, to get to La Entrada. So they're going from Menlo Park to Menlo Park through the county. Also note that in this triangle, and this is why this is a good place to start for annexation, I recommend annexing the whole region. It actually touches the city on three sides, and there's just a short gap from city to city. On the top of the next side, it shows where jurisdiction changes from one side of the street to the other. Five different places, just on one block, where it changes from city to county, from one side of the street to the other. This complicates law enforcement, complicates trying to deal with traffic. Two minutes wasn't very long. I just, I just want to say this bottom one that shows, shows the support, there's 80% support. All those green dots are people whose support. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
I remain completely perplexed about these infrastructure programs. You've got the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets. I don't want to take it off, but Mr. Murphy was just saying that this might not necessarily be the appropriate place for it. So I really think you need to have a conversation, and I'm not faulting anyone's strategic thinking. I do think you think strategically. I think the council needs to think strategically about the appropriate place for these things. I know Vice Mayor Taylor was talking about Newbridge and Willow. That shouldn't wait for years and years. I would hate to see it go into a black hole of the T M P. But I also think that this needs to be, there needs to be some ground rules here about what goes on these lists and what is part of, whether you want to call it the T M P, or I'd love to call it a five-year work plan, something. So we, I should know if I need to call safety and have a bunch of parents show up, if it's all about political will, or if there's going to be a thing that's actually going to happen. So thank you.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you. On these last items, starting with 48, the Burgess Park Snack Shack, understand that's being funded by an outside source, and I think it's appropriate for it to move forward. The Charter City Initiative should be placed on hold for at least one year after the hiring of a new city manager. So we know what we really are talking about when it comes to the charter. 51, 52, and of course, let's see, 50, the rest of them up until 54, yes, 54, the minimum wage ordinance. If we don't invest in our ground staff, the people that are actually doing the work out there that we think up, that is probably our biggest hindrance to getting things accomplished. We've invested an extraordinary amount of money in our higher-level employees, but we're doing nothing to elevate our lower-level employees. So I hope that you will work diligently, particularly with the unions, who may be a problem with that, in order to raise up substantially the minimum wage. 55C level, a single-family residential requirements must be consistent throughout the city. So if you make changes to the substandard lots, which affects people in districts one and two, that same piece should go for the rest of the city of Menlo Park. One of the things that to remember is that the Bellhaven area, the Bellhaven neighborhood, is already the densest populated area in the city of Menlo Park. I support the West Menlo Triangle annexation, and it's always good to hear them come and speak up for themselves. The complete streets, Willow Complete Streets, why isn't it in the transportation master plan? We cannot separate transportation into multiple projects and expect to come up with something that is going to serve the community. Thank you.
Ms. Bramlett.
A number of people have spoken about the need for an improved process, especially for our capital improvement projects, which, you know, I posit, these are the most important in our city. The public is also servicing issues that I would say pertain to the baseline of how staff does their work. I think we need a conversation about this. Not today, but I want to propose a separate public workshop, whatever you call it, where it's informal, where the public can come and make process suggestions, especially how these CIPs go to you. So I've studied the budget document, the stated process, of course, is, you know, stated, and the reality may be different, but it's all here at the beginning of the budget document. And it talks about tying these requests to broader plans and so forth. I don't see that here in what's being presented. I have a question about our input, what will be done with that. But supposedly, it's the community's vision, which, again, we don't have a shared vision. And then this, it looks as though the staff submits their ideas to a committee, a capital improvement project committee, which consists solely of staff members. And I've seen a form, may not be, you know, maybe there are other versions, but it's not very detailed. It talks about staff submitting requests with estimated costs, benefits, identified risks, et cetera. I would say we're not seeing that level of detail. And then the prioritization criteria is vague, and it doesn't tie into resident values. So it sounds like we have an internal process, and then you see it, and then we're here today trying to influence it. We could improve.
Ms. Levin.
Good afternoon. It's Dana Levin. I'll say one thing with a Friends of Caltrain nonprofit hat on, and three things as an individual. So the first thing is the high-speed rail coordination and environmental review. That has been really slowed up, and I don't think that should be a high priority, but more as a reactive, if anything, is coming forward to make sure that we're keeping an eye out. There's something that's more time-sensitive, which is the Caltrain Business Plan, where the board is going to be making some decisions about the direction and goals, and they're going to be making those decisions this year. And this is something that our staff should be on top of, and I think there may be some things that would merit a study session. And I'll send an email accordingly in the next couple of days on that. So that's one. Number two, sea level rise, I'm not sure this is here, why this is here for the city. Shouldn't we be working with the county and the region on that and participating in that, as opposed to be having our own priority as a small city, small part of the bay? Three is on the single-family, just a quick point, as an individual, I get recruited to be on the planning commission. The reason why I don't is the planning commission spends so many hours with neighbors critiquing their single-family home remodels. I don't think people should be spending all that time doing that, and I would be happy to see that. I think that would help manage the city and residents' time. Last but not at all least, who thinks we should be prioritizing minimum wage for the city for social equity for the low-income people in the community? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Shanson. I am speaking up on behalf of minimum wage. We brought it up last year. This ordinance is not specific to what we are asking small business to kick in. This is a "our house first" ordinance, right? This is looking at how we are paying all of the employees in Menlo Park who are working on an hourly basis, and making sure that they can live on what they make. In addition, I support the West Menlo Triangle annexation, and I agree with the other speakers. Thank you.
Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. And as has been mentioned by many, many people, and again, by staff, so many of these things are intertwined, and it's difficult to separate them out without looking at the implications for other items. I'd like to speak to what was sent in as priority number five for the chamber, and that's item number 52 on this list, downtown utility undergrounding. It's a necessary measure. It's part of general beautification, maintenance, safety, and future development. Yes, it also gets addressed, perhaps, as we look at the parking plazas, and it's also intertwined with the specific plan and the upgrades to the specific, the amendments to the specific plan or the review of the specific plan. We can't look at these things in a vacuum, but utility undergrounding is very important. Right now, we see some development going on. Most of it is on El Camino, when I'm speaking of the downtown area. But we do have development going on along Santa Cruz Avenue, along Menlo Avenue. Several projects have come forward, and it becomes the responsibility of the developer to do some of this undergrounding. Now, whether the developer does it, or whether the developer puts money into a fund, two separate things. But you can't have a developer on one side of the street responsible for undergrounding when the poles are in a completely different area. It doesn't ring true. It doesn't do what we want it to do. So I really think we need to look at utility undergrounding as a project, and then understand how the developers work with the city, with staff, to accomplish our long-term goals. Thank you.
Hi, Teri Upendio, Bellhaven resident, sorry. I'm going to address number 51, equity and education. I liked earlier today that I heard people talk about equity should be a primary focus for the city council. I'm very lucky. My child is black, and we were able to get in the Tinsley Transfer Program. She's right now at Hillview. As far as I'm concerned, she's gotten a private school education. Her, the vernacular, what she's learning, the physics that she shares. We have another child in our street who is also the same age. It is appalling, this child goes to Bellhaven. The differential between what my daughter knows and this other young black girl is, it's offensive to me. And so I don't know what's going on. I know Ray Mueller put together that joint authority years ago, because I've lived in Bellhaven now for 10 years, but I think this should be a major priority for the city council. If we truly want equity, we have to think about education. People in Atherton are worried about the burglaries that are happening there. I know kids in my street are in gangs. If they're not going to education, what future do they have? I mean, it's, it's just appalling. Thank you.
Okay. So I appreciate all the public comment. Just real quickly to address some of these items that are on this list, we actually do have plans to address this year, but we're talking about whether we're taking items off the list. So for instance, minimum wage, I think, as mayor, I'm already on the record in the almanac that we are going to, my intention was that we would handle that in the first part of this year as soon as we could. We had some other meaty items in the same area, who the same staff would be looking at, such as tenant relocation ordinance. But we will be, my intention was to look at that, but I also, frankly, on these items, wanted you all to be able to weigh in whether you still want them to be on the list. So if there are items here that you see that you're interested in looking at this year as a priority as well, we can go ahead and state that now, but we're going to have the prioritization discussion later after this. The other thing I would tell, I just want to point out to folks is, we go through, the process that we do here is to put things in a top-five prioritization, all right? If you watch the council throughout the year, you know that doesn't mean we don't do the other things. But what it means is that there's a metric, there's a metric for staff, and frankly, for the city manager to know, that these five items better, better be done, or have significant progress. It's a, it's a metric that we hold ourselves accountable to. Doesn't mean the other things won't be done, doesn't mean that they're not important, doesn't mean that they aren't, that they aren't priorities to us. We just have to have, we just have to have that gradation. So I know myself, for instance, and Starla could tell you, I just talked with her about equity and education issues last week. And I'm sure that a lot of items on here, council members have been talking with Ms. Jerome Robinson about as well. So, but some of these items, you need to wait until they get advanced, like the Burgess Park Shack snack. That item continues a little bit at its own pace because it's dependent upon other items taking place in the city that relate to the park and recreation master plan. And when that's done, how does that fit into it? And we don't want people in the private sector to give money to that until we know what that looks like. And so, doesn't mean it's not advancing, it just means it takes its own play, its own pace. So I explain that to you before we have this discussion, because I don't want people to think that some of these items aren't, are somehow unimportant or lagging. It's just, there is a pace that, and trust us, we all want that pace to move as fast as possible, including staff, and sometimes we slow them down. So, and that's really what this is about today. So let's go ahead, if there's any council member who has anything up here that they want to take off, or have a question about, to determine whether or not they want to take off. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Carlton.
I just have a question. Sea level resiliency plan, I know I've been to a number of meetings with, oh, God, now I'm blanking on his name, County Board of Supervisor Pine. And I know that our environmental quality team is communicating and liaison with Supervisor Pine on that. He's kind of taken the leadership role. He's got his own kind of group. I've been to a number of the meetings. Kind of to a previous point, I'm not really sure why it's there, because we're a long, long way from actually doing anything, like really taking action, other than planning and being aware of what's evolving at the county level. Is that there just because it takes some staff time to attend those meetings? I was just wondering why it's on the list at all? Because it's kind of one of those ongoing background things. Not that it's not critically important, but I just, seems kind of misplaced on that list.
Good questions. So I take a first stab, and others may be able to chime in. So it is something that was called out from the general plan update as an implementation measure for us to kind of figure out how we may need to deal with some existing infrastructure that's pretty much, would be below sea level rise. So it's kind of specific to Menlo Park and how we would deal with some of that. It was funded in last year's CIP project, and part of that was to get the funding there to be able to potentially partner on, with the county, that if they're working on a plan, that we could piggyback on that. Things have evolved further since then, and there'll be something coming to the council. I think this is probably the fifth or sixth thing I said that's coming to the council soon, related to a new agency that San Mateo County is looking to related to a new agency that San Mateo County is looking to create, which would be modifying the flood control district's charge to include sea level rise as well. So I think what we would, unless the council wanted to actually defund that, we would just continue to kind of keep it on hold, see what happens with the county efforts. But this would be to develop a plan, this money is not used for staff to attend meetings. So if it's, if the council collectively thought it should be kind of defunded and the money returned, then that'd be one thing. Otherwise, we would just kind of continue to monitor and be on hold.
So it's monitor and be on hold at this point, pending leadership from the county? All right, that makes sense.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Okay. I had a question about the Snack Shack. Whatever the private funding, is that going to include staff time as well? Or are we going to be responsible for staff time?
So we would be responsible for, so architecturally, there's an architect in town who has already drawn up the architectural, the first portion of architectural plans. He's indicated he would submit second port, the second part. It's a question for council, so it will come back to council for approval once it's well-defined. It'll be a question for the city whether or not we would go ahead and waive our planning fees around that, and on the building fees around that. But it would be a building, would be a city facility. It would be sitting in the center of Burgess Park. The idea around that, I mean, I can brief, the idea around that is after, so if you look at the closing of Oasis and the closing of Foster Freeze, what we've lost is really the ability of, we've lost that, that segment of place for people to just go and enjoy themselves. And more importantly, the idea, and talking about it with the Park and Recreation Committee, and those people who came forward and are interested in it from the public, is that it's a place where kids can go after they come through Middle Avenue, bike crossing, and go hang out after school and enjoy ice cream, or eat hamburgers, or just enjoy. So a component of this, would be, it would be a component of this Burgess Park complex that would be that, would be able to provide food, provide food and a place to hang out at that price point. And also frankly, do it for the many activities that happen here on campus, such as the Little League, the soccer, the basketball, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay. On number 49, the Charter City, I support putting that on hold, removing it. 50, anything related to transportation, I think needs to be inclusive with the transportation master plan as far as the El Camino-Rial corridor. Mayor Mueller, if it's okay with you, with equity and education, if we can rename it as all children in the city of Menlo Park should have access to high-quality education? Because there are students in District One and in District Two that are in the Ravenswood School District. And also, there's some issues that we've learned about recently with Ravenswood. So who knows what's going to happen with them. With number 52, I'm not sure if this is a Mr. McClure question. Is, is there an opportunity to create a special assessment district to underground power lines downtown? Or any other area of the city of Menlo Park? I'm going really fast, just for time purposes. 53, well, 54, I definitely support. 55, if we are doing anything staff-wise with that, and we still need to keep funding in that area, do we have a fund named for the sea level rise resiliency? I mean, I don't know how it's earmarked in the budget, but is that possible? With city family, I'm sorry, single-family residency requirements, whatever we do, it should be citywide, not specific to one area. As far as 57, welcome to Menlo Park Monument. I'd love for people to know they're entering Menlo Park when they're driving through District One, and there's no sign other than what's on the Dumbarton Bridge. I support 58, the West Triangle Annexation. And as far as 59, anything related to transportation should be folded into one with the transportation master plan. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to try to unpack that. So with 51, so it sounds like the one that you want to take off is Charter City. And so why don't we go ahead and not debate that today? But we'll bring that as a separate item, because there's going to be members of the public who want to talk about that. So we'll put that on as a separate item discussed later. The Equity and Education Joint Powers Authority, if you can, I plan, and I talked with, talked with Ms. Jerome Robinson about that this week. And there is, what I'd like to do is instead of just renaming it today, bring that again to council to talk about, because there's movement that I think we'll talk about. So I'll commit, if that's okay with you, I'll commit to bringing that. So this council can weigh in on that and what's happened, what's happening there. On, is that okay with everyone? With, is there any others that you wanted to take off? Because I think the rest of the comments had to do with folding them into other things, or what you wanted to see substantively in them. Okay. We can, in terms of folding them into other things, does that mean you want to take them off and then have them, and then just be listed under, or?
It's easier for staff, but it seems like we have all these transportation issues, and they're all separate.
So, I mean, my memory of the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets is that there was a discussion last year in, there was a discussion last, there was a discussion over a year and a half about cut-through traffic that took place in the Willow's Neighborhood. And then, and there was also a Willow Safe Routes to School movement at the same time. And then what happened was, people said, well, you know, we should just have a total Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets and not deal with these things ad hoc separately. And then what happened was, the cut-through traffic got so bad, we had to deal with that separately. But at the same time, we still have the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets taking, taking, taking place now as a process. If, I mean, I, my question, I guess, is to staff, is there a benefit to desegregating that now? Or should, or, because it's not, as it's being folded into the TNP? Or what's staff recommendation on that? Because the parameters under which it became its own independent entity are different today after we just went through that entire cut-through traffic exercise. But I don't want to, I know that there's still a Willow Safe Route to School component to that, and trap, and a component to this. And also just a multimodal component to this, I don't want to cut it off. But I think we are talking about some of that in the, in the TNP. So I don't, and I'm not on the, I just joined the TNP, so.
Okay. So what, I mean, and I can understand where it's challenging to kind of work through some of these things. What we're, what we're trying to do is create this bridge, and maybe a different way of doing things, between the work plan, CIP, TNP going forward. So right now, we're in the stage of, these are items that were kind of, that were on the work plan, we're asking for some direction on. The number 59 Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets is in the funded CIP, so it's listed there, and was identified as a tier-three. So it's still funded, it's on the books. In relativity, it's tier-three versus one or two. So it would still be pursued. Then it's a matter of, we're going through the process now of the transportation master plan update. Again, we're having to work through all these things real-time. It's not a perfect world, we don't have a magic wand where we can kind of just, all of a sudden, take care of it today. So we're working through this process. To the point where the, between either the complete street, sorry, the Safe Routes to School Plan, that's also in the works right now, that hopefully we can release soon for some public review, which will then, I think, help in describing this as well. Plus the TNP. We will be, we're working towards a different process for how these things are categorized and grouped. So right now, it's a little, it's a little messy, but we're working, working through it.
I think I have an idea on this, because I know we're going to talk about, at the council, we agreed in the Bellhaven goal setting, we would talk about a similar process for Bellhaven around these issues. And my guess is if we leave this categorized as Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets, but we leave it tier, we leave it tier-three, but we've set aside the funding, there's no reason to get rid of that. What will happen is, when the TNP comes out, that money, if appropriate, could be subsumed into the TNP in what they're doing there. And so it's just, what 59 would, would remain would be a placeholder of a project that we want to keep track of. Is that possible?
Yeah, so to kind of simplify, if it's, and we can maybe double-check if there's any others on this list that were CIP items. As it relates to the work plan, unless the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets floats to a top-five, six, top-10 priority, it would live within the CIP, because it's a funded project that would be implemented. And then it would just be cross-checked against the TNP for how that gets implemented. So it could come off the work plan completely and live elsewhere.
Great. I think it's, so I think it's fine, I mean, is, sounds, go ahead, Mr. Carlton.
Yeah, just, because, Councilmember Combs. Yeah, thanks. The TNP doesn't actually implement anything correct, right? It's a sort of collection of possible projects. And so I'm just sort of getting some, some sense of, of like how Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets would roll into, into that specifically. Is it just another project?
Let's see, so more generally about the TNP, one of the key components that have been identified from the get-go is the ability to be able to prioritize projects for implementation. So if it's, so that's been set up as, that would be the tool for transportation projects. And we can point back to the 2004, '05 Bike Plan, identified projects in high, medium, and low. And the city would implement those based off that, that's, that schedule. Some of the specifics as it relates to the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets, as the mayor said, had two components to it. One was safe routes, one was the cut-through. Again, we'll be coming to the council this spring to talk about the Willow 101 Interchange Project that had, as part of that, temporary turn restrictions that went into place. Those were temporary, those need to be revisited. So we need to decide at some point whether those two topics of cut-through traffic and safe routes to school remain bundled together or separated out. So that's, those are things that would be occurring over the springtime, especially as it relates to the release of the upcoming Safe Routes to School program plan that talks about where some of the priorities are for infrastructure improvements. And so the, what's being looked at for the Willow's Neighborhood as it relates to a number of schools in the neighborhood, that's why it was called out by the neighborhood, and not just a specific school, is more on an infrastructure plan.
Okay, and I just want to sort of make sure that nothing's being lost because when the description is sort of, you know, neighborhood complete streets, you get the sense of a holistic look at what's going on. And so was it always the case that in your mind, this was just cut-through traffic and, and safe routes? Or was there, was there more? And my only concern is that in the folding this into, you know, the TNP, is something, is a more holistic look at, at traffic in the Willow's going to be lost? And sort of that's my concern. Or is it, please correct me if this was always just about cut-through traffic and safe routes?
Yeah, definitely, there's no intent to lose that overall intent. We may just need to kind of revisit, reconfirm that the issues that were there a few years ago are still, still there, because some dynamics have changed. One example would be those temporary turn restrictions that went, and that changed some of the dynamics. We also have speed tables that are going in on Marmona and some other streets. So there's things that have been, have changed. We need to kind of do some check-ins there. But there's, what I'm trying to describe now has nothing to do with changing the intent of the scope of that study. But through a process, there may be some revisions to that scope.
Okay, cool.
So I think what we need to do on this is, when we do the TNP study session, I'd like to talk about this as one topic. Because I think we, I think this is opening a lot of questions, and we have an hour and a half left. So.
Can I just add one point?
Yeah.
And this is a general comment, this isn't specific to any of the issues we've been talking about. From the staff perspective, as I like to say, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. And so that's really sort of the gist of the priority setting and goal setting, that, that we're working on the projects that are most important to the council. We will not, unless you give us direction to, unfund any existing projects. We just want to make sure that the ones that are most important float to the top.
Okay, so. Oh, Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. I agree with my colleagues, my, I, one thing I wanted to point out, you know, we'd met with the annexation neighborhood and a lot of the people. That is critically important as well for Safe Route to School. If you look at the map, there's a lot of that population that goes into La Entrada. And being able to work on something that is all Menlo Park will really help facilitate. We've had children hit by cars, or bounce off cars in that neighborhood. And this is a really critical area. I agree with what we're saying. I guess my only concern, and I'm just throwing it out there for us all to remember, is sometimes when you have something really controversial or complicated, and you have something reasonably straightforward, like let's get our kids to school safely, let's get a bike lane in. I just worry a little bit when we fold it in, and I totally understand why we would do it. But I want to make sure that we don't lose that simple solution. You know, our, my middle school kids could be in college before a bike lane goes in. I find that deeply frustrating, that this is a bike lane. And this is taking how many years to get a bike lane, to paint a stripe down a street? Now, I realize there's a lot more to it, that there's a lot of logistics and all this other stuff. But I just wanted to throw it out there, that we need for, not just for Willow's, for our schools. If we want to deal with traffic, that's a lot of traffic. That's a lot of people dropping off their kids to school, who could otherwise be healthy kids riding bicycles. And my only concern is, just kind of throwing it out there to keep in mind, is I want to make sure that we don't take a solution that is something we all really want. I mean, as a mom, as a human being, we all want kids to get to school safely. And I just worry about taking that and putting into something more complex, and it getting lost, especially when we have some funding and we have the will to get it done.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna, I just sort of briefly, sort of go through my thoughts on, on the list, and try not to echo too much of what has already been said. But I certainly agree with a lot that has been said. You know, my just holistic concern, I know we're looking at taking off things, is that it seems like a very cluttered list, right? And so there is this thing of where, like, these are the priorities. But it's like, if you have five priorities and you have a list of 50, you know, what's the value of the list? Versus if you have a list of 15 things. And so it's hard for me to see something like Burgess Park Snack Shack, which, again, I, I, certainly who opposes that? There's no reason to, and especially if there's a possibility of, of private funds, you know, making that happen. But it's just sort of hard for me to see that on a same, the same list as the minimum wage ordinance. Granted, and I know that there is a process by which this all has to be sort of, you know, laid out. But I would be sort of, again, a little bit more mercenary in my approach, and just say there are things that have to go off the list. And, and that may be one of them, right? That's just the way sort of I'm approaching it. I certainly think the Charter City Initiative is something that, that should, should be removed from, from the list. I think a lot of the debate around why we, we're pursuing that path has, has been, been removed. And I think some of it was, was sort of not clearly thought out as far as it resolving an issue with regards to district elections. And so, yeah, so that, I know Mayor Mueller has already said that we'll come back before, before council, you know, totally fine. But, you know, that's, that's, I'll reiterate my opposition to it when it comes back before council. With regards to the, the only other one that I'll pick out is the single-family residential requirement, you know, and guidelines. I do think that we need to relook at how we approach. And this is something who people have listened to me for a while will not be new, how we approach substandard lots. And so, but that is, when people talk about something, you know, that focuses on one part of the city versus the other, this certainly would be something that would be citywide. But the impact would be greater in those neighborhoods that tend to have more substandard lots. But I do think we have to, to, to look at that process and look for efficiencies. Again, like I said in the past, in the same way we've looked said in the past, in the same way we've looked at efficiencies with regards to commercial development with a specific plan. And so I would obviously be very much in favor of that staying on the list and, you know, being amongst the top priorities.
So just, I want to reframe a little bit here. So because something is on the list doesn't mean it's, I mean, we call it the council priority list, but because something is on the list doesn't mean that it is like the main priority of the city, right? These are all council projects. And so the question isn't whether or not it's a city priority, the question is whether or not it should exist as a city project in the future and at a time it be, it has funding or some requisite thing happen that then we would figure out to go ahead and proceed. A great example is like the fence at the gatehouse. The reason why it's on the list is because it's a project and it's going to take staff time. And so what we're trying to figure out right now, so I realize the list may look a little muddled, but it's because it's a project and this is where staff put these together because it's like, well, some of these projects, and like I see what you're saying about the, you know, single-family residential requirement guidelines, I know it's important to you. So maybe we move it off the muddled part of the list to the priority part of the list. And I already told you guys, I intend to do that, the minimum wage ordinance, but some of these projects are just city projects that until there's a moment, they're not going to have much prioritization. I know, like, so back to Burgess Park Shack Shack, it's a project, there's something there, but when it came forward, even though it was great, even though the Scroll Society gave its endorsement and the Park and Recreation gave its endorsement, when we sat down with staff, staff said, we have the Park and Rec Master Plan taking place and there were some issues with respect to the undergrounding of utilities there and how it affected. So it was like, all right, it's a project, but all of that stuff's way more important. So that's got to get done first and then we'll see if it's feasible. So, so I think that's, might provide some clarity of why the list may look a little bit muddled. It's just when a project comes up, the question is, the question sometimes is, is it, is, you know, how do we, how do we calculate its, where do we, how do we calculate the staff time required and then try to fit it in? So, any, so I know we've identified some, are there any that you guys wanted, any more you guys want to take off that you just think isn't worthy as a city project? Mr. Rigeraos.
If I may, so where we're going with this particular list is, these are, for the prioritization for 2019, these are the items that we talked about earlier this morning that are going to continue into 2019, '20 based, we didn't have any feedback from council necessarily to remove those. What we're asking for right now is which of these should be moved over to that list for prioritization? That doesn't mean that the project falls off, it just means it moves to the prioritization phase.
I don't understand. They were all on the list before and now we've gone through all of them to see if any should come off. Why would, why would we, are we doing that again right now? We've already gone through the entire list if any should come off. So the question now is what moves up to top five?
Yeah, so if, so we're going to pare this list down if I, I think we're saying the same thing.
We're going to, well, we're not, we've already gone through all 59 items.
Yep.
And we've identified items to come back to the council to discuss about whether or not they need to be dropped. So now the question is, are there new projects? And then after, if there's new projects, then what, based on what's left, based on what we know is staying, what are the top five? Okay. So are there, so are there new projects? And so are there new projects that any council member, that aren't, isn't listed here that council wants, a council member wants to bring forward? Yeah, actually, is there public comment? On new projects? New projects?
And I'm glad you asked, new projects, because I was wondering when I could bring this forward. One of the things that we would like to see is the installation of an automatic public restroom at Fremont Park, and I would reference the J C Deco French toilet designs used in San Francisco, Palo Alto, other municipalities as an example. There are no public restrooms in the downtown area, plus Fremont Park is a site of many city-sponsored events such as summer concert series, Halloween hoopla, holiday lighting. It is not fair to expect the neighboring businesses to shoulder the responsibility of public use. And when I look at the number of item, or the number of activities, city-sponsored activities in Fremont Park, I do not think that you can categorize Fremont Park as passive recreation any longer. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Shanson. I have been to, this past year, to the Finance and Audit Committee, I think, three times. I sent a letter to the city council in 2018, about a year ago, asking for transparent amenities funds. I know this was mentioned in the mayor's State of the City speech this year because we have hotels in various districts in the city. We are seeing lots of development and not a lot of public amenities that are coming from this. I think some effort must be taken for transparent amenities funds, at least set them up. And then I would like to revisit the downtown specific plan. I would like to see upzoning in the city to match the M2, both from the environmental standard, the density standard, to encourage transportation-oriented development and to add housing to Menlo Park in areas that are served currently by public transportation. Thank you.
Katie Beruzzi, yet again, speaking for Complete Streets Commission. I've alluded to this a couple of times, but I want to be very explicit. Our segue idea from the Oak Grove Bike Route is a plan to get people of all ages safely from Burgess Park to the Hillview area. And we're really, what we're really looking at is a safer bike route that encompasses Middle Road or Middle Avenue, Olive, and some of the other problem spots that we've identified. And we can, I think Jonathan and Bill made a presentation, actually, briefly to city council about this a little while ago. They have a pretty thorough plan that they'd like to share and we'd love to see that added to the agenda. It feels timely, especially considering the Middle Avenue crossing, the air planning, as well as the resurfacing of the street. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Tom Cabot, an environmental quality commissioner, and just speaking today as a longtime resident of Menlo Park. Menlo Park can be really proud of its supporting Peninsula Clean Energy that got us essentially a very green electric portfolio delivered across the regular wires, and that's now a stepping stone to letting everyone in every building proceed with decarbonizing Menlo Park. But there's a great thing that, an opportunity that the city should pursue in 2019 by signaling staff to make it a priority to participate with Peninsula Clean Energy in the effort to take the state up on the opportunity to implement what they call energy code, or reach codes for the building energy code in the new cycle that comes up. So it would take some staff effort to participate, but Peninsula Clean Energy is pitching in consulting services and some financial assistance to all of the cities in its territory who pursue that. So it's our money coming back to us. And if the council can signal the staff that this is a priority, then, then a new reach code can be brought forward to council for its decision. That could help buildings get built at a lower cost than building them with mixed fuel and having gas lines to them and in them that later have to be removed as we get serious about fighting climate change. Last year was a big wake-up call about getting serious about fighting climate change and now 2019's the big opportunity to catch this wave with the, with the local effort to help cities pursue a new reach code to prevent building buildings wrong. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Diane Bailey with Menlo Spark. I wanted to echo support for what Commissioner Cabot just described and also note to you, we sent some comments together with Menlo, together with the group, and also individually supporting these climate actions to be prioritized this year. And I also wanted to note, a high school student from Menlo Atherton High who wrote to you yesterday, and I won't read her whole letter, I know you guys are short on time. I'll just summarize to say, she asked that we look at where we can make these newer buildings be zero-carbon and fossil-free this year, and she notes that climate change is an issue that affects the entire world, and if we continue to take serious actions to mitigate and prevent the loss of biodiversity and resources essential for our future within our own city, we can influence a greater change around us. I ask, this is Kiernan, I ask you to seriously consider prioritizing climate change issues in the 2019 agenda so that our future and the future of our children can have at Menlo Park that we can come back to and be proud of. She's president of the Seeds Club at Menlo Atherton High School and she couldn't be here today, so she asked me to share these comments. Tom Cabot summarized the request very well. I'll just note that we nicknamed this the 32-City Strategy for Reach Code, to really prioritize and support all-electric zero-carbon buildings for all new developments and really avoid making the mistake of hooking into fossil-fuel gas lines for new developments that would create a dependency on fossil fuels for decades to come with new buildings. This is strongly supported by a consulting firm on retainer with both Peninsula Clean Energy and Silicon Valley Clean Energy. These agencies have invited all 32 cities within their jurisdiction to participate together in trying to put an end to new natural gas connections for new buildings. Thanks very much.
Hello again, Pamela Jones. I have two things that are new. One is to revisit and update the Procedures Manual for the Menlo Park City Council Mission Statement, considering that the Bellhaven neighborhood becomes the benchmark for measuring the prosperity in our city, remembering that what is good for the Bellhaven neighborhood M2 is also good for downtown and the rest of Menlo Park. The second piece is, as we've talked about transparency, we need transparency over public safety. And so I ask for the following, that the police do a monthly report on the number of traffic stops, ticketing, non-ticketing, and include ethnicity. This was a discussion about two years ago from the city council and it was supposed to be coming forward. Also to determine the number of Menlo Park residents versus outside residents. Two, the number of stops at critical intersections. Three, Uber and Lyft violations such as parking on, in non-parking places, U-turns in the middle of the street. Four, every time the police assist outside of their jurisdiction, that we have, that we track that so that we know how long they're there, why they're there, how many police officers were there, and how long it took to do whatever it is they were asked to do. Also want to follow up on the mindfulness program that was started over a year ago, the number of officers that have completed it, what the results were, how they felt about it, how it could be improved, and what the final cost was. So I would appreciate us having transparency throughout the city and that includes our most, one of our most important pieces, and that is in the area of public safety. Thank you.
Mila Zelka with Palantir in Palo Alto, to suggest the formation of a subregional TMA that focuses on transportation equity. Right now, you are on a path to creating an independent TMA after 2022, which is more than four years from now. There are several TMAs in the mid-Peninsula. Next door in Palo Alto, we helped create an independent TMA, PATMA, which has championed transit pass subsidies for low-income service workers, serving over 330 people in 2018 alone. While data on commuter habits is important, there are challenges on seeing the full picture on trip generation, mode shift, distribution, and route choices. The expectation that one can gather all of this data, then plan out what course to launch, has significant limitations given how quickly data changes and the cost of such studies. PATMA, while not perfect, didn't let data gathering get in the way of doing iterative pilots and nimble programs as they mature. The city in Palo Alto seeded its launch with only $100,000 in 2016 and is a partner in developing evaluation criteria, including gathering data over time. A group of private sector, public leaders, and concerned residents from throughout the mid-Peninsula have been having loose conversations on how to create mode shift to and from employment centers, how an independent yet resident-informed entity, either a subregional TMA or a federation of TMAs, could ease the burden of running a singular TMA in any one city, and how such an effort could begin to tangibly address transportation equity. There are benefits and challenges, including diverging interests among employers and cities, but we believe it's worth looking for mutual interest. Next week, PATMA is considering accepting a grant to convene subregional talks to contract with joint venture Silicon Valley to formally bring stakeholders to explore such an initiative. If they do, we hope someone from this body participates. This is a path with momentum, both in concept and implementation, and potentially less staff time. Thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'm going to get my point across by just referencing an article initially. And this article was in the July 18th issue of the, uh-oh, the Daily Post, I believe? Yes. Palo Alto Daily Post by Emily Maybach. The title is, "City Considers Forcing Facebook to Open Gym to the Public." Oh, my. So anyway, I thought it'd be interesting just to give you an interesting quote from the article. I'm only going to feature one member up there on the dais and it is our beloved city attorney because he knows how to keep a straight face and I know it won't be harmful because this is his quote. And the quote is, "Long and complicated history. McClure said that the story behind the gym and whether it ought to be open to the public or not is long and complicated, and since there are legal issues embedded in the discussion of the issues, he could not comment on the matter. I do not want to inflame the issue or passions around this topic," McClure said, "but there are always two sides to every story or situation." Wow, that's pretty loaded. And to think, I live in Bellhaven, I've, I shudder to think how many months I've spent of my life in public meetings, volunteering, just to see some public benefits in our part of the city. And to know that a project can be fully built out and as presented to the public, in the public, it included certain items, such as a gym, or, I'm sorry, a health club and a cafe, and then, once it's built, they aren't there. At least if they are, please tell me where I go to access this public benefit. So long story short, accountability and transparency are a must. We are not getting the benefits that have been promised or, or at least stated in all of this development and it's taking way too long. I'm concerned it's going to start costing our city and that we're going to start having deficits because you know what can happen. So, thank you.
Hello again. My top priority would be to have you commit to the process of developing a 10-year strategic plan. Using a bottoms-up, community-led process, develop this plan. The plan to identify the community's main priorities and aspirations for the future and the top strategies that will be implemented to advance our shared vision for the future of Menlo Park. Plan to sit above all other plans in the Menlo Park planning hierarchy. We have many plans, many of them say strategic in them, but we don't have an overall arching plan. Plan to include vision, mission, and to Pam's point about the mission, ours is almost identical, the one in your Procedure Manual, to the mission from the city of Oxnard, except theirs says open and transparent government. We don't have that. That alone would be, could change. Okay, organizational values, culture, goals, priorities, et cetera. So it's important but not time urgent, and it's, again, a municipal best practice. I'd also like to see priority two, improve and expand public outreach, communication, and participation, and we could do that through better embedding it. The problem is, we're finding out things too late. We come here, yes, it takes up staff time, it also takes up our time, but that's, you know, democracy is we're involved. I don't want to live in an oligarchy. Okay, priority three, establish meaningful municipal benchmarks to foster a more innovative, entrepreneurial, and results-focused culture with enlightened leadership because we can place our performance into context. I agree with the statements about increasing transparency, accountability, and oversight. And finally, priority five, bring city facilities in Bellhaven into parity or better with those at Burgess Park.
Hi, Karen Grove. I wanted to second or third the comments on zero-carbon building codes. Personally, I think I had my wake-up call on climate in 2007 and at some point, a few years later, I hit the snooze button and the snooze alarm just went off last year. I'm going to make a personal commitment to replace my gas heater with a heat pump this year, or at least to, Diane's promising me some information, I'm going to look into it. Definitely going to do that this year. I hope that we can do the same. My 19-year-old son is not rhetorically, he's truly angry. My nineteen-year-old son is not rhetorically, he's truly angry at our generation for what we're doing with climate, so let's hope.
Echoing Karen, this is Jen Wallison. Hi. Echoing Karen, climate change, what can help climate change? Getting more people on bikes and on foot. So I really think there's some shared values in what I've been talking about, like, all day long. And I do think it can help make lives better, which I think, at the end of the day, is why you all decided to run for council, to really impact people's lives. We can impact people's lives from eight to eighty. I just got an e-bike, it's awesome. Electric scooters, they're becoming all the rage. We need to make more room on our roads for these new technologies and people getting around in sustainable ways. I really appreciate Councilmember Carlton's comment about, "These are just buckets of paint, and we don't have to wait hundreds of years." And so to get this done, I would really make Safe Routes to School, Safe Routes from eight to eighty, and hire a person on staff that's a dedicated bike, ped, multimodal, sustainable transportation, whatever you want to call it, so you can actually have the capacity to get this done, because a lot of it is just pop-ups and pilots and just throwing the paint on the ground and giving it a try. And then on to a totally other topic, taking off the Parents for Safe Routes hat, borrowing from my friend Adina here, is jobs, housing imbalance, and really measuring these and being accountable to coming up with reports quarterly on where we are with this jobs, housing imbalance. Thank you very much.
Adina Levin. And as an individual, I would like to support what Pam Jones said about public safety and want to put particular weight on measuring the traffic stops. As someone who is melanin-deprived and female, I am not the person who is ever going to get stopped walking down the street or biking or driving, and therefore I feel a moral obligation to say we should be keeping track on not having disparities in what we are doing and being aware. Would like to endorse what Jen said in terms of the jobs, housing balance. That is a major issue that contributes to traffic, and it contributes to housing and housing affordability problems, and that is something that the city council should be able to get information as to where we are, to see if we're going where we want or whether we need to make any changes. So that was. Two, on the regional TMA, I would support joining the exploration of what can be done, and, you know, not just about equity for low-income people, but smaller businesses, residential neighborhoods, and so on. But I don't want that to get ahead of really understanding local needs. TMAs are very local. There's a TMA created for Treasure Island, and it has ferries as part of it, because it's an island. Every area is different, and the needs are different, and we really need to understand those local needs and bring our local businesses and neighbors along. So we shouldn't wait for a regional thing in order to really understand and advance our local needs to be able to effectively participate in something potentially regional. And lastly, another plug for having a layer here where we're looking at our projects that are ten or twenty million dollars and above, and looking at that really short list of projects that we cannot all do, and making sure we have those priorities prioritized.
Oh, I'm already up there, yes. I'm still Rachel Horst, and a couple hours later, I'm here bringing up the issue of interconnectedness again. But having said that, and also referring to that letter from Menlo Together, which was sent, there were specific points in there that perhaps should be reflected on this list, and I will just put that to you to consider. So perhaps this is in the context of the downtown-specific plan, but we talked about how we're meeting the commercial square-footage cap and how we're not quite meeting or reaching the cap on residential. And, you know, the Housing Commission has also publicly deliberated this, why units are not getting built, but specifically why affordable housing units are not getting built. So it may be worth honing in on affordable housing in particular and taking a problem-solving approach and saying, "Why is the development not happening?" We have spoken about this at the Housing Commission, although I'm not speaking for the Housing Commission, just to say that, you know, the funding is there. Is it an issue of identifying land, developers? What is it? And so one of the specific ways that that could be addressed is to, you know, have staff or some, not to add to the workload, but to look at that problem and see how we can solve that specifically. And then, just again, to plug the looking and reporting on the jobs, housing imbalance that is extremely important to everything I've just said and to what the others have said. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Harry Bims, longtime resident in Menlo Park. So my comments are that, given that we have limited resources, I think it's important to focus on prioritizing projects that allow us to be as efficient as possible to address as many issues as possible. So I would suggest that in prioritizing projects, I think that, you know, what I've been hearing is that we're looking for projects that address particular issues kind of in a silo, whereas I think that there are projects that we can prioritize that attempt to address multiple issues at the same time. So, for example, we know we have affordable housing issues, we know we have environmental quality issues, we know we have transportation issues. So when we're looking to prioritize projects, I think we should prioritize projects, for example, that would address all three with a common set of activities. That way, we can be more efficient as a city. So when we look at projects like, for example, the Dumbarton Rail, we shouldn't look at it as just a transportation project, but we should look at it through its impact to affordable housing and environmental quality, et cetera, and try to get as many things done with a single project. I think that would be the thing that would be most effective. Thank you.
I'm Sue Conley. I grew up here. I want to thank all of you for spending the time here and welcome to the new city council persons. Really appreciated. To reiterate what other speakers have asked for is clearly what is requested by the residents and taxpayers is more transparency in the process, have a true voice in what's happening in the city, and to understand the financial implications, and also to have impartial and objective groups doing true evaluations and reporting. I'm seeing a disparity among the goals alignment with residents and priorities versus some city management projects, and I understand, you know, people have their jobs to do, but we have had some, several projects that have been kind of directly in opposition to what residents are doing, and we're seeing some things still kind of getting pushed forward, you know, e.g., the Burgess Library, which, thank you for making that an NA for now. We have Bellhaven as a critical issue, we want to make sure that goes through. I really want to say, non-bias process and community engagement and accurate reporting is so key. This is where considerable loss of trust in our city leadership has created major problems. So in having, like, an architectural firm that benefits from the city library, conduct the focus groups, and having city staff submit reports that have been inaccurate, as evidenced by what was even reported in local newspapers, is what's truly disheartening. We need sufficient alerts and warning of key issues so that we don't have to have quick phone calls to neighbors to say, "Hey, guess what is happening again?" Also, for city council meetings, I really would request, with all my heart, that we make really important agenda items first and foremost. We've all sat through at 1:30 a.m. where people had to leave because they have kids and had no opportunity to speak. And I just want to make sure everything, we have budget and cost impacts as a part of any community project, so there's a resident voice in the decision-making process that impacts us financially. Thank you.
Hello, Satiz Cativar. I'll be very quick. I think everything has been covered today, except for one item. I certainly agree with the jobs, housing, imbalance, reporting, but maybe a subset of that is housing for the missing middle. I wasn't here this morning, but I don't think those words have been uttered today, especially teacher housing. If you actually go and talk individually to teachers at all our public schools and talk to them about the distances they're traveling and what the trend line on that is, it's pretty substantial. I think it's a big, long-term problem. I don't know if we make that a project, but at least as a priority, we can't lose sight of that, because it's, just like the imbalance is growing in the wrong direction, the distance these teachers are traveling is really going in the wrong direction. Thanks.
All right. I want to thank everyone for your suggestions. We're going to bring it up here now, but first, I did want to correct one misnomer. There was a suggestion to move the main library to an NA, but that's coming back in front of the council for a decision that hasn't been yet moved to an NA. So now we're going to talk about, as a council, we've had all of these, we've had all of these items listed, and so if a council member wants to go ahead and say they want to add that to the list for consideration, and I think at the same, I think what we'll do with the same thing is, there's no briefing on it at all, we don't know what it is. So if council wants to say they want one of these to be considered to be added to the list, what we would do is we would then, again, add that to the list for discussion at the council meeting substantively with the input from staff of how much time that would take around that. But we should have a consensus here amongst us that we want to, or at least two of us to say, we want to move that to the council meeting discussion. So it's time now for council members to pick from this list or add something to the list of new items. I do want to have a discussion around creating capacity to support teacher housing. I've met with Supervisor Semidion on this process, who's championing it right now in Palo Alto. There is a site, at least one site here in Menlo Park, that I know a school district is looking at and looking at to do teacher housing on sooner than later. So to have a, to have a discussion around that and to set capacity time around that is something that I think would be advisable, but we would have to vote on that at council, that we wanted to create some staff capacity around that. And to that, I also promised them on Wednesday, February thirteenth, 2019, at Sequoia High School, there's going to be a town hall about that, that I'm doing with Supervisor Semidion, which happens also to be my birthday, so, whatever. Are there any other dates that you guys all, or there, excuse me, are there any other projects on this list, are there any projects on this list or projects that, or other projects that you want to suggest be added to the council agenda, to the council meeting on priority for consideration? I think I said that right. Councilmember Carlton?
Okay, so first of all, for the record, bike lanes are more than just paint, you know, but I'm still advocating for that. I was actually going to talk about teacher housing, too. I think that's a really critical point. When we talk about, however we phrase the importance of making sure that all of our schools are doing the absolute best that they can, teacher housing is an integral part of that, and I think it's critically important that we address that sooner rather than later. So I second that, and I think it's, I'd like to see us move forward.
All right, so that'll just be added to the list, and then we'll define that with staff about the discussion around that. It's not added yet to the work plan, we'll talk about that night as a council discussion, what's, you know, when we vote what's coming off, what's been identified today and what's coming on as potentially today.
And as we can, if we can move forward as well on zoning or other ways that we can work, it's not just the public school teachers, it's also, one of the things Semidion's worked on years ago was the importance of preschool, and preschool teachers as well having difficulty. They tend to talk about the missing middle, people falling through the cracks. Preschool is critical, and by definition, we don't want them to have to charge too much, because then people can't afford to put their kids in preschool, which is necessary for them to do well in kindergarten, you know, there's the knock-on effect. So if there's any way that we, as we move forward, not just focus on public school, but also on preschool teachers as well.
Okay, are there any other items that the council members, either looking at this list or that they themselves want to add for consideration? Councilmember Nash?
So I think this sort of has been encompassed, both in other projects that we've looked at and in what's up here, but I'd like a general category for housing, where we proactively seek out affordable housing sites and funding citywide, especially near transit and services. We could lump the, add the teacher housing to that and also the jobs, housing, reporting. I'd like to see a report quarterly on jobs, housing imbalance and/or balance, and all the developments that have been approved, approved, entitled, occupied, and essentially just where we are, and include, including that on a GIS map. I think we need to work with partners to mitigate the impacts of that. There's obviously huge impacts as we add housing, which we do need to do, and update the zoning as appropriate. So that's one piece.
Let's separate that from the teacher housing thing, which is a defined, I think a defined project, and then create this as a defined project, and you can sit down with staff and create some definition about what that, what that is. And that's fine, we'll add that, that's fine, we can add to the list.
One that I have, which I think is update reach codes, although I had not, I don't know specifically what the is, to adopt a policy requiring all-new commercial and multifamily development to be zero-carbon and fossil-free. And, again, this has somewhat been said, tenant landlord support, develop resources to support tenant and landlord needs, since forty-two percent of Menlo Park residents are renters.
All right. Any other items to add? Nope? Nope? Okay. Vice Mayor Taylor?
I just wanted to make a comment with teacher housing, as probably to be specific, because there's early childhood education, elementary education, and the pay is different. It's vastly different. Early childhood education, teachers have paid the least, and we can look at our own salary schedule to see that. So I would like some clarity for it to be either included or two separate categories, which wouldn't really make sense, but with teacher housing, because there's a huge difference between early childhood education teacher pay and elementary education teacher pay, there's a big difference.
Okay. I need to make a correction to what's happening here with this chart and explain. So we had had public comment and public create, and there is a list there of public comment. All of those items are not going to be moving over onto our council discussion for consideration unless a council member here says they want it moved over. Okay? So we need to delineate that list, starting at, we need to delineate, make a difference between there. Does that make sense?
So let me say it back to you, make sure I understand. We're, first of all, the council can weigh in and say, if we get two council members, that it comes back as part of the discussion of priorities. And then there'd be a separate list that the council members are asking for it to be a priority, right?
Right. So basically, we had public comment, now it's up to us council members to look at the public comment, and if we want to advocate for one of those things be added to the list and then have a discussion about it at the council meeting, that's fine, that's great. So, but that has to be an affirmative action to move it over, okay? And then, secondarily, if a council member wants to say something that wasn't commented on by public but has an idea, they can raise it at that time, and we can put it on the list. But I don't want there to be conclusion, I don't want people to be confused that because it was listed up there in public comment, that it's going to be considered at the council meeting. Okay? Does it make sense? Okay.
Yeah, just a question along those lines. So if there are, you know, two council members who sign on for something, coming back to council, what then, give me some sense of that, does that report look like, and what is sort of the work product that goes into that coming back?
So, my, what I believe would happen is, and it's what's happened in the past, the staff is going to sit down with those two council members, frame it, figure out what staff capacity looks like, and then at our meeting, there is going to be an affirmative vote of whether or not that's going into the work plan. And frankly, staff is going to tell us if there's too much in the work plan, and if those putting that in means something else is coming off. Okay?
Yeah, and then, so just as I, like, if I'm one of two council members that are affirming that something should come back, I should also be prepared to, going forward, engage staff in a conversation about what I exactly think that that looks like and what should come back.
Through the city manager?
Yeah, no, of course, that's what.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
I'd like to see the, where is that, the top? Update the city council Procedures Manual? I'd like to see that on there. And also, some type of policy around CCIN. Ms. And also some type of policy around CCIN as far as responding. I don't respond, and it's because I don't know if any other council member has responded. But I know that some people who submit letters there ask, "Did you read it? I haven't gotten your response." So I would like to have some type of policy around that.
Staff would very much support that. We are, we would really support that. I think maybe a different tool would be of great value. And then also coherent policy that we can bring forward to the council about how we treat the comments that are made on CCIN.
I had a clarifying question about if we're doing a study session specifically that's to the Bellhaven neighborhood, would it make sense to take something like the amenities fund and put it on as a priority? Or should hold off and wait until we have the study session? Because the amenities fund, I'm making an assumption from the comment Ms. Shanson made. Last year, we asked about it at the Finance and Audit Committee, and then we asked for it to be put on the priority list and it didn't make it. So now it's on the list. So if I ask for it now, she just put, I think, amenities fund, creation of public amenities fund.
So right now, what you want to do is you want to say, I want the council, because you need to, she made that suggestion in public comment. We now, as council members, have to decide whether or not we're going to consider it. It sounds like you want to consider it. So we can go ahead and put it there. And then I think that there's probably, we can discuss it during, we can discuss it, obviously, when we're in Bellhaven. But I think, I think in terms of it being a council priority, if you want to wait, we can wait until then. But I think, I don't know how much staff capacity is around doing that.
You know, I think it's a really interesting idea and I need to work with the staff to better flesh out, sorry, exactly what that would mean and what it would take. It may not be any kind of challenge at all. So if we could just have, not today, but we can report back to you on what we think that would take.
All right. So then let's go ahead then, and that'll be on for that meeting as a report back.
But we did have agreement between at least two city council members to move the teacher housing over to prioritization. So I was just going to ask that you make note of that.
Okay. I haven't made my comment yet, but I'm waiting for your others. So do you have more, Councilmember Nash?
So one more is just, well, I'm unclear as to how all these sort of, all of our conversations today work together. As I've made many comments.
That's a good point. I think the first step is for us to be able to step away from the meeting once we've wrapped up and sort of reorganize all the data in our own brains. And then we'll give the council a summary report. There will be some minutes from this meeting. And we'll give you our best effort, our best estimate as to what the council did today. And of course, there may be some tweaks to that, which is perfectly appropriate. You know, we may miss a few things. But we will try and bunch it in a way that's more digestible than, and in a summary form. I mean, this has been, you know, several hours of in-depth discussion, all of which is valuable. And I think there are overlapping areas, so we'll try and capture that more efficiently.
So as we went through each section, we said, we went through, identified all of those items, said what would come off the list. So that was the first part, take what's off the list. So we're going to have a listing of what was agreed would come off the list in this, well, actually, no. We identified things that would go for discussion off the list. So I would expect in the council meeting, there's going to be a list of things for discussion come off. And we're going to vote that night whether or not it comes off. There's going to be a list of things that will be tier-changing. We're going to vote that night on if the tier changes. There's going to be a list, then there'll be the list of what's left, okay? Then there'll be the list of what is being proposed to be added, which are these items here. With respect to the items that were being talked about to be added, there'll be a discussion about, there'll be a listing about what would be necessary staff-capacity-wise to add that. In that meeting, what we will do is we'll go ahead and see what, if there's something that needs to be added and there isn't adequate staff capacity, we will look at the remaining list and see what we think should come off to take its place. So we're taking things off, putting things on, or just leaving it on, but just leaving it on at a very low priority and the muddled list that says someday we want to work on it. For you three especially, you guys are going to be here for four years. You might have things that you want to work on, but you'll agree with staff. We're not doing it this year or next year, but you want to keep track of it. Finally, at the end of that, and I don't think we're going to do it, well, we can start to try to do it today, but there is the prioritizing of the top five, right? And so tonight, today, we can have a preliminary discussion of that, of what we think are top five things. I don't think we're going to have time to get to the end of that discussion today because we're doing a hard stop at three.
Mr. Mayor, so if I could suggest, maybe it would be more helpful to the council if we brought back all of the different lists and then you had that data in front of you to come to a conclusion about the top five.
That's great. That would be fine. So that means that after we finish this discussion, we can go ahead and break today. I, so is that helpful? Yeah, sure.
So I just want to make sure that, for example, the Middle Avenue Caltrain underpass, that was, that whole discussion was from before, so that will be brought forward as part of the prior one. And if there's an interest in broadening it, can that be done at another meeting? Or should I explain that now?
Either way, if you, to the mayor, but either way.
Well, I mean, you're welcome to explain it now, but we're, in terms of broadening, in terms of broadening it and making it larger, I guess actually now, yeah, add it, put it on the list now since it's a different project.
So essentially, just as part of the Middle Avenue Caltrain underpass, I'd like to include the related access, as has been mentioned several times, so that we establish bicycle pedestrian routes between Burgess and Hillview School and also Burgess and the San Mateo Bike Bridge, which I think will be the big conduit to Stanford. When I've had a brief discussion with Stanford, they foresee a lot of the traffic, the bike traffic going up Middle Avenue and over to the San Mateo Bike Bridge. And so as part of that and the whole view of Middle Avenue and how that will work, I'd also think that we need to study improvements to the San Mateo Bike Bridge and how it can handle the increased use. Another piece of that? Did you want to? Okay. And then the other piece was just the whole safe routes and making sure that that's, I think that that has been discussed, but make sure that that's on the list and have that as a comprehensive citywide project.
Mr. Murphy, did you want to clarify?
Yes, so I just wanted to understand the difference between what you just described for Middle and the Middle and Olive Bike Lane up above.
So it's, goes, includes the Middle Avenue, the Middle Olive Bike Lane and expands that a little bit more.
Okay. So just in terms of whether things are combined or separate, I would advise that we keep the Middle Crossing as a distinct item. But I think Middle Olive and the Middle Ave Caltrain Access, those two could be combined.
That'd be fine, whatever, however you want to do that.
Yeah, I'll just chime in very briefly because wanting to be responsive to, you know, the public comments and a lot of what I think are very good, substantial and solid ideas. It's hard for me, though, to at this moment suggest that something get moved over to the priority list given how massive it already is and how many things are on there and having some real understanding that things are finite and not completely understanding where Mayor Mueller is coming from, but not wanting to add to the muddled list until it gets a little less muddled. And so I just want to say that like, you know, in my silence here, it is not some sense that I don't, or I have a disagreement with these suggestions, maybe one or two I do. But for the vast majority of them, I'm completely in support of. It's just that in my head, it's hard for me to support moving something over, you know, when I believe that we've probably already reached what is the max of staff capacity.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
I agree. Thank you, Councilmember Combs, for bringing that up. This seems daunting and, forgive me if I say anything that upsets anybody, but this process to me seems unreachable. It's just, and going back to what Mr. Bim said, which I guess there was no way to kind of put it in as a priority, is about how we work effective and efficiently, this seems inefficient. And going back to what Councilmember Combs said, it's like, there's a couple of other items on there, but I don't want to put that on your load or on our load to consider because it doesn't seem doable. It doesn't seem reachable. Just looking at these priorities, the list is very, very, very long. When I look at my own priorities, it's about 20 and I can narrow it down to 12. But to have, this is, we're reaching, what, near 70 priorities? It just seems a lot.
Well, if I may, if I understood Mayor Mueller, the items that are currently before us, the only one today that would move over to the to-do list would be the teacher housing support because it's the only one that has two council members supporting it. Which is fine. And we won't lose, I promise, the other items. And we'll include that, not on the prioritization list, but as thoughts that came up during the discussion today. On the bike rec.
I don't know if my brain can handle an additional, an addition to the list. It's a lot. And then for clarity, I remember, I believe it was Satees that brought up the missing middle. Well, teachers make less than the missing middle. So the majority of teachers that I know make less than $100,000 a year. The missing middle, I believe, the AMI is 120, which would, I'm talking about 120%.
Okay. Councilmember Nash?
So I also am concerned about how many projects we have on. I think we had too many on coming into the room. Having said that, the installation of the auto toilet at Fremont Park, my understanding is that's part of working with, to help the homeless in addition to the folks in the community. And so I would propose that that one moves over for consideration. The teacher housing support, I would ask Councilmember Carlton and Mayor Mueller to think about putting their weight behind affordable housing as a piece, as an umbrella under which to have teacher housing support. So it would be a larger discussion, not just the teacher housing. Because there's many, we need housing for downtown workers. We need housing for, anyway, so many different folks.
Yeah, I can respond to that. So, I mean, the affordable housing, as you were explaining and the reporting out that came out of it, what I was thinking at the time you said it was that the Housing Commission works with housing staff. And a lot of the metrics that you're talking about come out of San Mateo County. I'm not sure right now that we have the ability to be tracking some of those things. The Housing Commission, I mean, if it wants to go as a suggestion to the Housing Commission to look at its ability to track those metrics and how we would do that and come up through that. My whole thing right now, when we were saying it, was I was like, okay, well, that's, a lot of those are reporting metrics that I think are affordable housing, are, I think we have a new person now who's doing that, not yet, almost. The person who'll be doing that, their job is to be, going to be keeping track of those metrics. And so to sit down with them and discuss what metrics are readily available and the ones that aren't, what do we look at? But I'm not sure that we need to allocate staff capacity in order to build the reporting requirements of that staff member, or rather, what would flow down through city management. So I'm not, I'm not against that, what you're saying at all. I think it's important. I just am not sure yet that I need, that we need to make it a council, a council project, if that makes sense.
Can I then suggest that perhaps teacher housing support becomes affordable housing support?
The project that I'm talking about is actually an identified project that, with a site and funding mechanism for it. So that's why I don't want to expand the scope of what that is. I mean, candidly, I'm not, there's no reason, I'm totally transparent about it. There's discussion about at the old flood site, putting in teacher housing. So if there's, so that's going to take staff capacity. It's a finite window of time upon which to do that, there'll be, it's going to take work. And if we do that, we need to make a decision. We're going to support whatever that is and then be fair to staff and allocate time now for that. So did you, are there other items you want to add?
Well, I was just going to suggest that perhaps that's more specific then to that project rather than having it be teacher housing support generally.
The problem, the only reason why I left that a little bit larger was because I believe that they're identifying the same focus as trying to identify other sites in the city. So there's a, and then also, it's not just sites in the city, but there's talk that, I mean, totally transparently, Supervisor Semidion has a project that's taking place in Palo Alto that potentially we could allocate sites to, we could allocate units to, to teachers who work here in Menlo Park. And so the idea is, the idea is just looking at this specific, looking at the specific issue, identifying sites and then figuring out right now when there is the political will, both externally with the other jurisdictions and our partners, do we have the political will inside to participate and allocate staff capacity?
And then one last comment would just be, the Middle Avenue, what's up there is the Middle Avenue Caltrain Access, San Mateo Bike Bridge, I believe is something that we should be, that we should, will, whatever, be working with Stanford as part of the 500 ECR. And so I don't know that it needs to be, anyway.
Okay. Any other, because, Councilmember Carlton?
I was just going to support the fact that the focus on teacher housing is because we have an existence. We have this issue that can be dealt with. And I don't want to see it get confused. I want to see a focused laser. Because what ends up happening, what we're doing today is triage. And I would like to triage out teacher housing as something that can be dealt with. And I like the word support because, as Mayor Mueller pointed out, it's, there are various parts to that puzzle, including possibly relooking at zoning issues for schools that may want to use parking lot, for example, to give that and have that rezoned for teacher housing. You know, there are different solutions that can be looked at. So I just wanted to support Mayor Mueller's continued focus on that. As teacher housing, and that doesn't mean that there aren't other issues that need to be dealt with. It's just a matter of triage for what we do next year.
So I guess this is a procedures, will there be, when we look at everything and if something is, we'll have a chance to?
As staff will tell you, there's always a chance to try to do something later, which I try, which I am extremely guilty of as the year progresses. And I apologize to that, I apologize to all of you for that in advance. I have a question now about my, I have some comments myself about these, some questions about them. While I decide if I want to second any of them. My understanding is the installation of the toilet at Fremont Park is already in process. Am I wrong about that?
Not wrong. There have been discussions between the City Manager's Office and the Chamber, but it hasn't come to the city council yet.
Okay. If we, is this, is it, how do I put this? It's already in process. It's probably going to be coming to the city council for discussion. If we say no to it today, would it not come to the city council? And is it, and, I mean, because my guess is it's coming to the city council anyway. So shouldn't we put it on the list because we need to allocate staff capacity to it?
That would be great. I think that would create less of a muddled list.
Okay. So, I mean, because the whole thing right here, this is an exercise in staff capacity. How much do you have to do the other thing? So if it's already happening, then let's go ahead and acknowledge it's already happening.
So, sorry, I completely appreciate where you're going of trying to move it over, but it's not already happening in terms of actual staff capacity. The concept is out there. There's some things that we want to work through with the Parks and Rec Master Plan. That facility would definitely need all the utilities. Whereas the concept previously was a porta potty downtown. So it's a, it's different than previous concepts. It can be done. Well, if that becomes a council priority, then there's other stuff that's not going to happen. And we can do that balancing act, but it's not, staff is not working, public work staff is not working on it.
Okay, so then let's do this then. Let's go ahead then, and we need to figure out, so put it on the list for consideration with what the staff looks like. And then I'll give you guys a chance to tell us how complicated it's going to be. Does that work for you guys? Yeah? Yeah?
So, I'm assuming that there's been no public outreach at this point, but there will be. Okay.
All right. Creation of a public amenities fund is something that we talked about, council's been talking about for, like, for some time, so I'll second that. That's fine. Yeah, so that needs to be added to the list. I want to, I don't even know, I don't know what's, what is, what's included in energy reach codes and carbon policy.
We'd have to work that out and come back. We, we did get a number of comments on that through CCIN, but I think we need more specificity.
Can we send that to, to the environmental quality, can we make a decision to send that to the Environmental Quality Commission for comment?
Sure.
Let's do that, then. Update the city council procedures manual, we do that every year. I know it comes to us to do that. Did we just do that at the last meeting, or when is it coming to us?
It typically comes during this session, but we weren't optimistic that we'd be able to get to it, so it would have to come to council under separate cover.
All right. So, that is going to happen. We will be updating that, so that's already, so that's, we've got that taken care of. The public safety reporting, we don't have a subregional, so I actually would support investigation and a report out on what's happening at the subregional TMA, because our partner jurisdiction is doing that. And I believe that there are partners in the city of Menlo, private sector partners in the city of Menlo Park, who may be participating in that. So, it may be a lost opportunity not to look at that, but I, if I don't have a second on that, I don't, it's fine. Okay, so Betsy will second that. And so, and I know staff has been engaged in conversation on that, so you guys can sort of explain to us if there's a concern about that, or what's happening. That's fine. It's the long term, okay, jobs housing, we talked about that, teacher housing support, talked about that. Yeah, the TMA, subregional TMA. It's the subregional TMA, not the police, not the police safety. We're doing that, Middle, Middle Avenue Caltrain Access San Mateo Bridge Olive. So, is that something, I know that in the, was it the TMP OOC, what is the, I don't, I have to learn the acronym, because I'm part of it now. Is that, are there projects in that that address that?
Some of it.
Some of it does?
What if we're?
All right. So, let's do that. Let's refer, let's put, see if we, let's go and refer that to the Complete Streets Work Plan, if that works for everybody. So, it's not a staff priority yet, but we want comment from them as, as to what it, what, just to put definition around that, taking into account the TMP. Okay? And which is the same comments that are around affordable housing, we can probably talk to the Housing Commission and firm those up, and then, if they want to put it into their work plan, they can, and then we confirm it up and see it, and then, at some point, revisit it. All right. Any other stuff that you guys want to do? No? And, yes, council, yes, Councilmember Taylor, Vice Mayor Taylor.
So, with the public safety reporting, what would that entail? Does anybody?
That's really up to the city council, to the extent that we have those details. And maybe the chief would like to weigh in on that.
Sure. Much of what was asked is already publicly available. It's, it's on our open portal, we have a lot of that information already, already there. And there's upcoming legislation specifically about reporting on racial identity of people who are being stopped, that's coming, it, the law's already in existence.
Is that for stops, or is that for tickets?
Both.
So, we can get that information, how to, how to access it, so that'd be great. I think, then, we are, we know how we're moving forward next. We, should we have a discussion about the, no, we're going to wait until this is all done, and then have the discussion about the top five at the, at the council meeting.
And I think our goal would be to bring it back on the 26th, February 26th.
That's fine. Is there, is there, that's fine. All right. As long as there's no item that's outstanding that we're holding you guys up, and you want to do something, I think just then, just put it on the agenda. Is there any item outstanding that we're holding you up on? Looks to Mr. Munzer.
Sorry, at the 11th hour, I just want to make sure it's under radar. So, Connect Menlo, the general plan update, the biannual review is scheduled for later in March, as you're all aware. Part of it is just a review of the plan, but then we're also running up quickly against some development caps, particularly on the office side. So, we'll go ahead and proceed with that. But last year, the council similarly prioritized the specific plan. So, what that did is that allocated additional staff resources to the specific plan, so that we could get more done. The reason I bring it up is that it would be similar for Connect Menlo, if you chose to include it on your work plan, and then, on top of that, to prioritize it.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Can you, so, when you say it will come up anyway, it's, so it's coming to council, and the request is whether you can have, for extra resources to?
Correct.
Okay. I would support that.
All right. Wait, I know, it'll, it'll, it's great. So, we'll, we'll have that come before us and to discuss it, then, but I appreciate the heads up, that it's, it's on its way. Any other, any other comments from anyone before we wrap, before we wrap here and close? No? All right. Well, I just want to thank, I want to thank professional staff. This was a long day, this was your Saturday, I appreciate you coming in today and working through us on this, and having all of this out for us. I want to thank the public. You guys, the majority, almost everyone in the room was here all day, which is, which says a lot about you and a lot about the city that we all love, so thank you, and thanks all.
Before you leave, I was just going to say, I'm actually going to go to Dubai next week, and I'm going to be there looking into, ironically, smart city, in particular, traffic signals.
Oh, cool.
And I'll let you know what I find.
Thank you. All right. We are concluded. Adjourn.